Good afternoon. And welcome everyone to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners Budget Workshop Special Meeting. At this time, we'd like to have a roll call. All those present, please raise your hand. Right hand. I understand that Commissioner Webb is on his way, so we look forward to seeing him shortly. We have now the invocation by Commissioner Ward and the pledge by Commissioner Orange.
Please stand. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for our blessings, our blessings of the citizens of this county, of this beautiful county that we live in, and thank you so much for the people here who are dedicated and willing to serve to benefit all of Pitt County. Guide us and help us and see that we are wise in our decision making tonight and in the future. Amen.
On that.
Let's face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call now for the approval of the agenda.
Somebody.
As we move on properly, second, let the agenda be approved. On the favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Over here to my left, on the favor of the agenda, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Agenda is approved. At this time, we'll turn it over now to Scott as our manager for questions, answers, and the follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a few items. Very quickly, we wanted to follow up from the week of May 15th from the budget workshops, just a few other items that were not directly addressed, questions that came up by the board members, then we'll get to the meet of why we're here tonight for this five o'clock budget follow-up meeting under item six, which is the review of fiscal year 1718 budget and the different alternatives. But in terms of the different follow-ups, we wanted to, there's a question from Commissioner Webb, but I think I want to wait until he gets here and then let's put that toward the end, so we're addressing him. Commissioner Ward had inquired about Pitt County school positions in terms of teachers' assistants, principals as such, and Dwayne.
Paid for by the county.
Right. And I believe on that one, we inquired, I think we have a second inquiry into them. We're waiting for that. We got the information on the, we actually do have the full information, as I recall. There's $10.7 million worth of.
That's actually the representative number of unfunded mandates, the total cost of positions.
Do not have the history yet on the position.
Right. So the $10.7 million represents all of the teachers, the principals, the assistant principals, and that's the current cost, right? Fully loaded salaries?
Clerical.
And what we're waiting for is the five-year history of how the number, the total number has changed or not over a five-year period.
Has changed over the five years.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McElhern had asked, and you have a handout in front of you that has green and yellow highlights on it, looks like this one here, the number of health educators. That was a question that was posed to our health director, Dr. John Morrow, and you can see the, that they have, says the division is comprised of 15 employees, 12 employees are highlighted in green, serving the health educator position, says only four of the health educator positions are funded by the county, and you can see those identified. A lot of their programs are regional in nature, but they do have a number of health educators who are working on different programs and issues, and we wanted to follow up so you have a clearer picture as to how that stands. We have, don't have a handout for this, but just an answer for it. Commissioner Garris had raised a question regarding the vehicle loan package for the sheriff's department. We're proposing a $1.1 million purchase of approximately 30 vehicles, and Commissioner Garris had asked are there other opportunities within the county government structure, maybe to do a similar type loan package and buy new vehicles to get rid of the older ones and maybe, you know, use those dollars for debt service rather than maintaining them. We've looked and we've talked to John Demery, who runs the garage as well as the solid waste and recycling facility. It's our belief that the sheriff's office is really in a unique position in terms of the number of vehicles, the number of miles they put on a vehicle per month and per year, per month, so forth, and that there's really, this is the only applicable situation where we can take about $360,000 of maintenance dollars from the sheriff's department, decrease his line item by that amount, and then do a loan package and buy 30 vehicles. Wanted to just make the board aware on another matter, this was not anything anybody had asked, but just wanted to interject this. We have received a cost estimate regarding the next road subdivision, road assessment paving program, and this would be for Woodmore Farms, which is behind the Woodmore subdivision. Woodmore is the current project we have going on now that is, I believe, 20 lots, about $140,000 overall assessment program, $6,000 per lot approximately. Woodmore Farms is, the estimate is close to $400,000 to do those lots, all the lots behind it. Now, does staff remember how many lots was involved in that?
Seventy.
Seventy? Okay, thank you. So 70 lots, and the only reason I bring that up is depending upon what direction you go fund balance-wise in terms of future fund balance utilization, drawdown, or buildup will really, I think would influence you directly on whether you, once the budget is adopted and they come forward and they've got the 75% signatures for the next petition, as to whether you would honor that. I do have some concern, they're working hard out there, I think they've got about 66% of the residents have signed the petition, they're working hard to get the 75% as required by the policy. I would hate for them to get that 75% come before you and then just say, oh, we don't have money. So just want you to kind of wait, keep that in mind as you look at the budget scenarios and as we move forward. On the last item, you've got a letter in front of you from the Salvation Army, and they had contacted me in the middle of the budget workshops wanting to meet. I've met with them probably a year ago or two years ago. They had requested to come in and was looking for participation by the county, either or or both, either and/or on capital expenditure for the new facility they're building on Memorial Drive and/or operational costs, and basically told them at that point in time, and kind of the similar message last week, last Friday, I went and met with the, I guess it's the corps officer, Major Ken Morris, who's a corps officer, that the county in terms of a nonprofit, were trying to hold, we're not expanding into funding additional nonprofits, but he did submit this letter and was asking for the county's consideration of a $16,000 appropriation for their breakfast feeding program that they feed to the public. I told him I would present this to the board and just let you know that they are making that request before you. Other than that, we do have some follow-ups, and I guess we can go ahead and get into Commissioner Webb's questions, and then we'll follow up with him individually, but Dwayne's going to answer a couple of questions that we had received offline from Commissioner Webb regarding...
Yes, sir.
Is it going to make any difference if you wait on Glenns and go forward with it now? You've got an hour of time, it looks like you might could insert it when he's here.
Um, let me ask, can I ask this question by Sherman Owens? Will it take just a minute to go through those, or? I think it's pertinent to the overall picture.
Okay.
He's got three slides, if we can just run those, just.
How long will it take?
Can you do it?
But it's pertinent to the decision we're going to have to make this evening.
What I was, I mean, I think maybe if you excuse interrupting, but do we know how far out he is before he'll get here? Could we just, if it's a few minutes, we don't know?
He's on his way.
On his way?
He's absent right now.
I realize that, but he's on his way.
That's fine, we can delay. I don't think it's, there's no big revelation in there that's going to change your mind on the scenarios. I do want to say that there was one other handout we have, and that's to answer the question regarding teacher supplements. I think there was a question as to how the impact of teacher supplements, how it impacts recruitment and retention. In terms of how the school system answered that, you've got a package in front of you of two articles they sent down, one that is entitled, Why Teacher Paying Matters, Recruitment and Retention Can Improve Results, and the second article is, The Teacher Pay Gap Is Whiter Than Ever. So that was the information we received from Pitt County Schools regarding that question. Other than that, we're ready to roll into the information, the material that you've asked us to come back with, and Dwayne and I are going to kind of do a tag team approach on this. Pass out copies, do they have the PowerPoint, the board members?
Because isn't this, isn't this on the unfunded mandate?
It's not identified.
So you have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you. Obviously, this is for next year's operating budget for fiscal year 1718. This is a follow-up to the budget workshops that were held last week, the week of May the 15th, actually the 16th through the 18th, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and this is, has the initial budget information in there that was presented, as well as alternate budgets based upon the input you have provided us in those workshops. The next slide in the PowerPoint represents the revenues from all funds. This is as presented to you last week in terms of how the percentage breakdowns, and all funds represents that larger 245 million overall budget representing the general fund plus all other funds, whether it's health insurance, solid waste and recycling, Leo retirement for law enforcement officers, and so forth. Next slide, expenditures, again, all funds, the 245 million, basically the same pie chart that we had at the beginning as an illustration. The next slide is your tax rate history. We presented this, but just wanted to go over it one more time. This is a history going back to 2000, 2001, showing the, in the middle column, the actual adopted rate, and the point of this chart is to say the rate has really fluctuated between 68, and at one point, about 10 years ago, in 2007, 2008, we were at a rate of 71 cents. And you can see the effect of revale. Normally, the normal cycle, as I presented last week, is that the board considers adjusting the tax rate at a point of revale. Last year, we kind of had the, we had the factor of the Pitt Community College bond referendum hitting the budget cycle in terms of the tax rate impacting it, and what your decision was last year, in effect, was to hold the rate for the general fund departments, but to only increase the tax rate enough to pay off the Pitt Community College bonds, which in effect meant the revale really had no effect for overall general fund operations of the organization. On the next slide, this came up, I believe Commissioner Coulson may have referenced this. This is an illustration we presented last year at this time as part of the budget information presentation as to the effects of revaluation. Obviously, revaluation was effective January 1, 2016, and we showed that just for residential purposes, now this doesn't apply to commercial, industrial, other realms of taxable property, but we showed that on average, all residential property went down, actually 54%, 40% went up, and then 6% had no change at all. So we wanted you to, remind you of this illustration in terms of revale and its effect. On the next slide, we show you the effects of the, this is the adblock tax, we show you in that middle column, the initial rate that was presented, the 68.6, the amount of revenue it generates, the 85 million to 894,000. Then we show you the cost for four scenarios, $75,000, $100,000, $150,000, $200,000 house. Middle column, you see the associated costs, $515,000 to $686,000 to $1029,000 to $1372. That's based upon our base of over $12 billion, $12.6 billion worth of taxable property, and then as presented before, the distribution between the general fund and industrial development. The last two columns, we illustrate what a one cent tax increase would yield in terms of additional revenue, and then we illustrate what a 2.4 cents there was, the 2.4 is the equivalent of a 71 cent rate, and the one cent would be the equivalent of the 69.6.
Also, just keep it of note at the end, at the bottom of that slide, because during the workshops, we did hear a desire to see this on a monthly basis. We gave you an example for a $100,000 house, the one cent increase would equate to 83 cents per month for $100,000 of value. A one cent increase would be that 83 cents per month.
Great, thank you. The next slides, we've got a composite slide, Kelly or Denise will pass this out. So we have, you're going to see this on one piece of paper, but for the PowerPoint presentation, we have four different slides. We'll let this get before you first. This is kind of similar to the handout you had last year at this time in the process in terms of the presentation format, and we had a number of scenarios that the board asked us to come back, and the presentation is similar. So it's titled, Pitt County Fiscal Year 1718 Initial Budget and Alternate Budgets As We Stand Today. In the first column, you have the factors of what the tax rate would be, the total amount for the general fund, that 124 million, again, that is what drives your tax rate being set compared to the all funds, that larger $245 million amount. The fund balance appropriation, the next factor, next factor is expenditure additions, if there are any in the scenario, next one would be any required reductions if they're required in the scenario, expenditure reductions, and then we forecasted two years out, and again, these forecasts are just forecasts. We didn't even use the word projection, we used a forecast, kind of like a weather forecast. Hopefully, a little better than a weather forecast. We forecasted to June 30, 2018, and Dwayne forecasted to June 30, 2019, in terms of looking at, I guess, all things holding constant, if we went down one of these four paths, where it would take us in those years. And that's, 2019 is important because we'd be then, the next year would then be a revale effect, or?
No, it would be two years.
I'm sorry, two?
Correct. It would be, you would have one bridge year.
One bridge year before you get to, after what we showed. So the first column, Manager's Initial Budget, came in with the tax rate at 68.6, which is the rate it is today, the general fund total, the 124 million dollars worth of expenditures, fund balance appropriation, a plug of $4 million, keeping in mind that typically $2 million of, normally, in the past, we'd only done about a $2 million plug because we didn't spend any more than $2 million. So under this scenario, our pattern this year is that we're spending about a million, and that we'd expect that pattern to continue. There were no additions in terms of expenditures because it was the budget as presented, no required reductions, and no specific reductions in blue. The forecasted fund balance for June 30, 2018 would be 18.01, and taking that trend, straight line, going to June 30, 2019, the following fiscal year, then we'd be down to 16.41, which then would be below your threshold policy to have fund balance between 18 and 20%. Next column looks at a 2.4 cent tax increase, which basically takes you to a flat rate of 71 cents. The total expenditures are held flat at 124 million, 418. The fund balance appropriation would drop down to $1,321,504. We would add back the surveillance office, intelligence officer at the detention center, we would add back the gang deputy with the vehicle, we would add the two positions in DSS for child support, the agent one, agent two. Within the health department, we'd add the public health education specialist, public health nurse, three specialists. Those two positions, remember, were very desperately needed to help fight sexually transmitted disease issues we have going on in the county. Then we have the additional library funding as requested. So you have a total additions of $326,561 is the total of all of those. You can see the forecasted fund balance for June 30, 18 is 19.49, and then a year out, 19.37. One thing to note on that fund balance appropriation of $1,321,000 is technically, you could increase your expenditures by another 700,000 to get to that $2 million plug. Now, your fund balance forecast is going to drop a little bit as illustrated here, but just wanted to note that. We took, I guess, the more conservative approach, just to put back in what you told us, dropped the fund balance appropriation to balance it out. On the next column, the one cent tax increase, we've got, obviously, we go from a 68.6 to a 69.6. Your total budget does not change at 124 million, your fund balance plug does go to 3 million, so it drops a million from four to three. We add all of the same things we did on the previous tax increase scenario, except for there was not enough money to add the public health three specialist, but we do have the public health education specialist, which we felt was probably more needed in terms of the STD issue that we just mentioned earlier. So total additions, $252,882. There was no required reduction, there was no expenditure reductions there. You can see what, under this one cent scenario, fund balance forecast for June of 18 is 19.06, so you're right in between your 18 to 20% goal. And then the following fiscal year, you're still at 18.51. The last scenario is entitled, Manager's Initial with Additive Positions/Library Funding and Reductions to Expenditures. So you still, you have the same tax rate as the very beginning under the initial budget, you have the same amount of expenditures, 124 million, 418, 798, you have the same fund balance plug at $4 million. It adds all the positions that we've talked about in the 2.4 cent tax increase. Remember, the one cent tax increase did not have the public health nurse three. In order to do this, the total addition is $326,561. So the required action or reduction would be, in pink there, that 326,561. In order to accomplish that and still have a balanced budget, we would need to decrease the market adjustment by about 0.35%, takes it down to 1.65. You can see the corresponding value, 169,000 was 170. We would decrease the Pitt County Schools appropriation by 134, PCC by about 20, Decree Shepherd Memorial Library by 2,300, and the Council on Aging almost 1,000, for a total reductions of close to 327,000. Under that scenario, your fund balance percentages are the same as the first column under the initial budget because everything's balanced the same way at 18.0 and 16.41. With that, I'll take a breath and ask Dwayne if he wants to interject.
No, I think you covered it very well. The only other thing I would say is that the percentage increases for the schools, the community college, Shepherd Memorial, and Council on Aging in that scenario would mirror the market adjustment. So that 1.6% increase in the market adjustment would be the same expansion amount for each of those agencies.
Repeat the first part of your statement.
Yes, ma'am. If you'll recall, when we went through the budget workshops and we noted a 2% market adjustment for staff, we also tried to mirror that same percentage increase for Pitt County Schools, Pitt Community College, Council on Aging, and Shepherd Memorial. And so that 1.6%, if we make these reductions as noted, that percentage increase becomes instead of 2%, it's 1.6% across the board.
For all of those.
Yes, ma'am.
Across the board.
1.65, actually, 1.65%.
The, Dwayne, the situation is on that all of them will still be getting an increase, but it would not be as much.
It would not be as much as in the manager's initial budget. Correct.
Thank you. If the board would like, we could go, for Commissioner Webb's benefit, we went through some of the follow-up questions. We have your communication to us, we had several questions about the overall budget, and we wanted to present some answers to your questions if we can. Dwayne's going to handle these.
During the workshops, one of the things that we heard was the continual burden that we have to incur at the local level to fund services that should be funded by, at either the federal or the state level. And so we've come to know these as unfunded mandates. This packet that you've just received, and you'll see on the presentation, we wanted to try to quantify that. That's been something that we've been working on, and so when we quantify the unfunded mandates, these fall into generally three areas: education, public health, and social services. And obviously, those are the three areas that we receive the largest amount of federal and state reimbursements for. So under education, you did, I believe you got a separate handout for that. That $10.7 million represents all of the cost of instructing students, that is supposed to be the state's responsibility. So for Pitt County, Pitt County utilizes $10.7 million of the local tax dollar for that purpose. When we move to public health, public health, this falls into two arenas. One is communicable disease prevention, the other is environmental health. And for Pitt County, again, these are mandates, and that represents $1.8 million that we are not reimbursed for providing those services. Again, these are all local dollars, 100% county taxpayer dollars that are funding these services. And finally, for the Department of Social Services, obviously, you know that there are certain, there are required matches that we have to put up in local dollars to match federal and/or state revenues. This $3.4 million represents the local tax dollars that are allocated to social services in excess of the required matches. So in addition to the required matches for federal and state dollars, Pitt County taxpayers also pay an additional $3.4 million of local tax dollars to fund those federally or state mandated services. We do not have an option of ceasing services once we meet the financial cap. The financial cap being what the federal or state government pays us and what our required match is under our agreement. If those individuals continue to present in need of services, we have a mandate to continue to provide those services, and that is to the tune of $3.4 million annually for Pitt County.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question if I could. Dwayne, of the $245 million proposed budget.
Yes, sir.
How much of that is really discretionary? How much?
That is a great segue to our next slide.
Okay.
Yes, sir. You'll see, we do have a breakdown of the $245.4 million budget. The first item you'll see is general government departments. That is all of the local general government tax rate-driven services, if you will, $79.4 million. You see the note there, that does include transfers. So there's somewhat of a duplication of dollars in that budgeted figure because you have to budget your transfers to things like debt service, to things like Pats or retirement expense, or health insurance. So the other funds there, you'll see, education, human services, none of these pass general government have any flexibility. There's also no local tax dollars that's driving any of that. So the only amount of the 245 that's being driven by the local tax rate is the 79.4. On this next slide, we further break out this 79.4. I mentioned the interim transfers, so 24.1 million of that 79.4 are just transfers, paper transactions, they don't represent true cash out of our account. They're financial transactions to support other funds within the budget. In addition to that 24.1, you've got $3.1 million that we call non-departmental. The bulk of that is insurance, the vehicle purchases that we talked about, it also includes things like, things that aren't easily classifiable in another department, like employee awards, recognitions, et cetera. That department is 3.1 million, and again, there's no salary dedicated to that. So we come up with a net general government department amount of 50. So we come up with a net general government department amount of fifty-two point two. So we start with the two hundred and forty-five million dollar budget, and we're basically down to fifty-two point two million that we can reasonably say can be affected, especially as it relates to personnel. Because you'll see as we continue to look at this, we're heavily personnel-driven. And you see, we, we've captured salary fringe and contracts, any of those contracts. Those are things like contracts at the detention center, our housekeeping contract. Those, we, we've grouped those with salary and fringe, just because those are, are services that are actually being, work that's being provided by people. And if you sum all of that together, the forty point eight million dollars represents fifty-two point, represents seventy-eight percent of that fifty-two point two million dollars. So Commissioner Coulson, to answer your question, how much of that is real, can really be affected? I would say that fifty-two point two million dollars out of that two hundred and forty-five.
So to drive home Glenn's point, with unfunded mandates, you take fifteen point, let's call it sixteen million, it's thirty-one percent of that number.
Correct.
And so that's really his point.
And unless you're gonna start firing everybody, it's really eleven point four million that we have. And you have to cut a whole lot of people to even have the, any effect on, to move the needle. But once you start doing that to create the space, you start moving the needle on the services that we're mandated to provide.
And, and again, as was shared during the workshops, the manager already has cut about six point five million dollars in expansion requests. And when we sat down with the department, we really did not see those expansion requests as being frivolous. They're really services that are needed in the community for, for a county our size.
So the bottom line, if I could continue, is the amount that I think is really the appropriate amount that we ought to seriously consider, seventy-one cents, we're still hitting the fund balance, one point three million dollars. We're still affecting our fund balance by one point three million dollars. So I guess if at the end of the year, we wait, we find out that we didn't spend all the money, the best-case scenario is, we might break even, might. But anything less than that, we hit the fund balance even harder. I'm not sure this is the time to do that.
You agree with those comments, Dwayne?
The one point three, let me see, let me just pull up. Under the two point four cent tax increase scenario, well, aft, currently, we're, we're currently projecting that your fiscal year seventeen fund balance is gonna fall at about nineteen point six million dollars.
So you agree in that?
Nineteen point six percent, excuse me, nineteen point six percent. So again, if you'll, if you'll look at the forecasts, we're, we're projecting that, and, well, we're forecasting that, that nineteen point six in one year becomes nineteen four, point four nine, and in two years becomes nineteen point three seven. So I, I, I wouldn't equate that to, um, to one point three million, and I, I would seek clarity on.
What's the fund balance appropriation, one, one million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, if that's not one point three million?
I'm sorry, that, that number represents the amount that would be needed to balance the budget.
I understand.
Yes, sir, the amount to balance.
So isn't that still the equivalent of?
That's not the equivalent of utilizing one point three. We're utilizing it for budgeting purposes, that is absolutely correct. But we wouldn't spend the one point three million.
Remember that, out of this hundred and twenty-four million dollar, or hundred and twenty million, however you look at it, budget, two percent of it normally falls back through lapse salary, and that's where that two million dollar plug comes in.
I know, that was my argument last year, and I, and I understand that.
And I would say, I, I would just caution the board, that had been a, our brief history in utilizing that two million dollar fund balance appropriation. In, in my opinion, we did not have enough of a history to suggest that we could depend on that, that falling back. And, and since we, we added so much in recurring expense coming into this year, we're really in a new posture as it relates to fund balance. So I, I would just caution the board on, on that fact.
Okay, Commissioner.
Glenn.
Oh, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for answering these questions. I know it takes a while to get off, but, so if, unless we're just gonna fire most everybody, our, our true, any wiggle room is about five percent of the entire two forty-five, the eleven million. I had a question about fund balance that was posed to me, and I didn't have an accurate, it was referred to as a cushion, which it is not, but it is, uh, and what it does. But what, because people hear what the minimum is, and, and assuming you can just sometimes go down to the minimum, but we know the, the trends and the negative bond ratings and the warning list and everything.
Yes, sir.
And, and Scott had alluded to that we could not even run the government on the eight point three percent that's required by the LGC. Do we know what the actual percentage is roughly? I'm not asking you, because I know you haven't dug in the numbers, I'm asking you on the spot, but just a, a roundabout on that.
Of what we would need?
Mm-hmm.
There's really not a, a, a one, a single answer on that, and it's because of the timing of our revenues. It's really seasonal, and, and as everyone is aware, our revenues, the bulk of our revenues come in, in December. And so as a fiscal year starts in July, we're depending on having fund balance. I don't like the word cushion, because a lot of times it doesn't feel, but we're depending on having cash in the bank, because that's essentially what it is, that we can make our payments. And so one, one month, which is what the LGC recommends, is eight point three, three, about a month, a month is eight point three-three percent. And so when you, when you see us having a, a fund balance of eighteen to twenty percent, we're talking about two and a half months' worth of cash in the bank, okay? And the other thing I would, I would just make sure the board is aware, fund balance is a point-in-time calculation. Please keep that in mind. When we give you the fund balance calculation, it is as of June thirtieth of that year. It changes, the minute we change from June thirty to seven one to July first, that percentage changes, because our cash is changing, because we're paying bills, we're getting revenues in. So that's a one-time-a-year, uh, marker, if you will, to kind of give us and outside entities an idea of where do we stand from year to year.
And that's why I asked the question, because I, I don't want to get anywhere near the minimum. That was, that was not the point. The point was just to help educate the public that the fund balance isn't a cushion, or, for lack of a better term, it's not a savings account to dip into in hard times. It's a signal of your financial stability. It's your ability to operate in an emergency. Let's say, you know, we have a hurricane or something, which.
Correct, and, and I would just, I would also mention that, you know, the recent Hurricane Matthew that we had, we are still working with FEMA to get our claims submitted. Not even to get the money back. We, we expect to have it submitted by Ju, the end of June, but we've gone from, I think it was in October, to, to this point in time, that that was money that we utilized out of our fund balance to pay the overtime, to pay for the supplies at the shelters and, et cetera. And it was a good thing that we had that fund balance available.
Thank you, and, and I just, yeah, and that was the point. I don't want the public to think we're just hoarding a pool of money, that the, the fund balance helps us operate, it prepares us for an emergency, it signals our financial strength, it helps with our bond ratings, it gives us a better outlook, so that when we have to build new schools in a growing county, we can borrow at less than five percent instead of borrowing at sixteen percent. And there's a lot of counties that aren't in the same financial strength that Pitt County is. And, and a lot of that comes down to being willing to make the tough decisions this board has made. They're not always popular decisions, but we, you know, we can't make decisions based on elections. We have to make decisions on the longevity of this county. And so that's, that's all I wanted to clear up, that it's not a slush fund that we can dip into and, and take vacations on and spend frivolously whenever we like. It is actually the really nuts and bolts, day-to-day.
Yes, sir.
Fund that keeps us going and signals that we are a county that is well-run.
And, and from a cash flow standpoint, we feel comfortable with that eighteen to twenty percent range.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I can add to that, just keep in mind, our peer counties, the last six years have had between twenty-five and twenty-seven percent fund balance levels in terms of their financial policies of how they operate.
And not just to throw in, again, I remember Floyd, I don't remember how long it took us to get that money back into, it took a long time, and it was a lot.
It trickled in, probably the first two years, we got a portion, it was probably.
Five years almost.
Five to six years, literally, literally, till we got all, totally reimbursed.
So, I mean, I did owe, what Commissioner Webb said, that the fund balance is a very important part of running county government, and it's not a savings account to be used and, you know, then figure out what we're gonna do the next year when it's gone.
Commissioner Owens.
Fund balance is, is not a savings account, but it also has a lot of intangible constrictions to it. Scott, how much, Dwayne, how much of the, you set aside for the last tax and fiscal year, how much fund balance, that's a part of your budget?
This year, four million dollars.
All right, how much did you use of it?
We haven't used it yet. We, 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 and we project that by the end of June, we are going to use at least a million dollars of that four million.
All right, so, so you're gonna use totally how much of it during the fiscal year?
In excess of a million dollars.
Instead of four million?
Correct.
So to me, that promulgates good business judgment. That shows that our people, our finance officers, our manager is using the judgment that this board tries to portray that we should use. You mentioned also that this policy of eighteen percent, that's, that's not a stated contract. I mean, that, that's not a set-in cement figure. We used what we've done in the past to accumulate how we work at that. Some of you might not remember, but back in, I don't remember how year, how many years it was ago, but we were close to eight or ten fund balance. Then, then we did a good job of managing, did a good job of, of functioning, and we then got a six or seven million dollar windfall, y'all remember that?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's when our fund balance accelerated to a tremendous account. And that's when we got the use of having eighteen percent. That probably was a component of why we figured at eighteen percent. It, it, they're unknowns, and you're absolutely right. But tell me, Dwayne or Scott, what are the two largest factors of establishing this percentage, eighteen percent?
Do, do you mean that got us to this point?
How do you compute it?
It is a, a calculation of cash divided by your annual expenditures.
So it's expenditure versus revenues, is that what you're telling?
Correct.
All right, if you increase your taxes up to as, uh, two point five percent, you can look down here and see, well, all we're doing is embellishing our fund balance. We're not solving the problem that we've had. If we increase our taxes one percent, we still embellish the fund balance. So every time you bring money in from additional taxes, or every time you expend more money, or spend more money, that is the component of calculation of this percentage, is that correct?
Correct.
So that's how you get up to nineteen point six again. I, I think that, and I've said this before, to short my attitude and my approach about it, I think Scott and Dwayne did an excellent job in bringing to us a budget which was based upon their annual study by the department heads that they had that brought in their needs, and, and some were cut. But they gave us an excellent budget that we had the first, and I've said that previously, the first presentation. That maintained the fund balance at, again, at eighteen point one. It accomplished what a fiscal conservative budget ought to be. It did not take money, we talk about whether a house is a hundred thousand dollars. There's a lot of houses in Pitt County that's less than a hundred thousand dollars. And it's just as hard for that person with a fifty thousand dollar house to get that one dollar a month as it is, is for Jimmy Garris to get ten thousand dollars a month. So, so that's the component that I, I think about taxpayers. And Jimmy knows I'm not picking on him, but by an illustration, but my factual information is probably true.
Jimmy, I'm adoptive.
Having said that, I think that they did a good job in presenting the budget they brought to us. And I've said previously, when we had the presentation, I thought it was. And I think Scott, Scott's been trained by this board. You might not agree and think so. Dwayne has been trained by this board to come in with a conservative attitude to save, not only bring forth good services, but to bring forth an atmosphere of protecting the taxpayer. And, and I think that's what this budget does. Now let me give you one, two more components. Where, where's my social service lady, is she out there?
No, I didn't see her.
You know, now is she included in these other things, giving her some more people?
Yes, sir.
You know, I told you that day, Ms. Elliott, that your budget was what, three hundred and fifty million dollars? The county's is only two hundred and forty-five. Am I correct about that?
Yes, I did want to clarify, though, the additional positions under the initial budget, she does not get additional positions, it's only if you increase taxes.
All right, but I'm using her as an illustration, that you got a federal-state budget that in totality exceeds what this total county budget is itself. So I, I have a problem wanting to raise the taxpayers' taxes to pay for that. I'll give you another illustration. The sheriff came in with, he wanted two, four additional gang supervisors, or whatever the term was, you know what it was. You only allowed one, Scott.
Correct.
On that material that we had about that, the sheriff was wanting to add a four hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. That again's gonna increase that fund balance that we talk about, and that necessity for us to have it. I asked him what the one of them be, it was about a hundred and three thousand. I think you went back and said you, you did, and your budget was gonna give him one, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. But with a agency that has, how many, how many employees are at the detention center insurance department?
Um, Florida.
Three hundred and fifty, four hundred? All right, that fifty's not gonna match my deficit with my point I wanted to make. But you got a total budget by, that I think gives a manager the opportunity to, and he's got a bucket full of, of money to put where he thinks it's supposed to be. He can appoint a sergeant, he can make, he can give ranks to all of his officers. He could take some of his money and use it and get his four gang leaders if he wants to, if that's the most pertinent and most generous thing to do, without having to take that a dollar a week out of that person that doesn't have it, the taxpayer. And I know that, uh, I'm running off at the mouth.
Keep on running.
And it, it's, it's probably falling on deaf ears, because basically, I think a majority of this board has already concluded that they're gonna vote for a tax increase. But until somebody shows me something differently than what I've been shown of necessity versus what you have to live on, I'm not gonna vote for a tax increase. And, but this last proposal that you've got here, Scott, on this, this year, it does two things. It brings forth to answer some of the requests that were made, some, not all. It's not like if you were Donald Trump, you could get the plane anytime you wanted or whatever, but it does answer some of the needs, and it maintains the fund balance, which everybody thinks is so sacred, I don't necessarily think that. I think the money and the fund balance, as you said, you only use a million dollars out of a four-year projected, a four million projected for the fiscal year. out of a four-year projected, a four million projected for the fiscal year, that with good management, good savings, and prayer that we don't have a great disaster. And the bond, the bond, we're talking about bond ratings, Scott and, and Duane, that's a heck, a heck of a lot, start to say something else, components other than, than what your, your fund balance is, is how well you pay your debts, it's those awards that you've been getting and bringing in to us. So there's a lot of factors that components that make this. So having said all that, in order to accomplish some of the things that's been requested, I would favor this, this last presentation, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Garrett?
I appreciate everything everybody has said, and I respect the opinion of every member of this board, I really do. And this is something just like the rest of you, I have studied and looked at in detail, trying to come up with what I believe is the most appropriate decision. And I could say a lot as introductory remarks here, but I think that they, those remarks have already been said, and based upon the discussion we had last week and the remarks that have been made this evening, the conclusion that I reach, which is gonna be different from the conclusion that some others reach, but I'm ready to put something on the table and see if we can go on and get some closure. I don't think there's anyone in the county that dislikes a tax increase any more than I do. However, we have had the same tax rate essentially for the last fifteen years, which I think is great, but I think that in order to fund a growing county, and again, I am very sensitive based upon my last almost fifteen years of training to, to the fund balance, to make sure that we do maintain an appropriate fund balance. Now, when our fund balance got down low, which was a deliberate management strategy on our part, our bond ratings did go down.
Right, when we hit thirteen point six-nine percent.
And when we.
And that was a result of a trend, because they saw a trend.
Yes.
A down, during the recession.
We actually didn't go down, but we got put on a watch list.
Right, we didn't get downgraded.
Okay, well.
Tell them why it went down, may I ask them a question, Jimmy?
Sure.
Do you know why it went down?
Yes, sir, because, because this board made a deliberate decision to fund positions during the recession rather than to cut people out of positions.
Or increase taxes.
Or increase taxes, that's correct.
So, all of that being said, I am personally not comfortable with the two-point-four increase. I personally don't think that that is necessary. I am comfortable with the penny tax increase because that funds some of those additional positions that were requested, that's outlined on this handout that you gave, Scott. And also, it gives me a two-year projection on the fund balance, and it says that as of six-thirty-eighteen, the fund balance would be nineteen point oh-six, which I'm comfortable with because that's in our eighteen to twenty percent range, and even at the end of, at, at six-thirty-nineteen, we're still within that range at eighteen point five percent. And to me, I'm comfortable with that. So I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve for our public hearing, the budget that includes the penny tax increase.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Should not all board members be allowed to speak before we actually go further?
I would appreciate that.
Well, I thought all board members who wanted to speak had spoke.
I'm not sure they were, I mean, maybe they were, but I just thought we.
Okay, that's fine.
We oughta give them that opportunity.
So I, I hold, hold my motion until the discussion is complete.
Well, can't you discuss after a motion is.
Sure you can.
Made and seconded. I'd like to second that motion, then we can have all the discussions.
It has been moved properly seconded on the motion of increasing the tax to one cent.
Yes.
All in favor of saying motion.
Well, now we gotta have more discussion.
We can have discussion.
Okay.
On that.
We go from Commissioner.
Okay. I believe at the last meeting, I asked the manager about if we stayed at the present tax rate, and could we add some of the positions, and that the last column speaks to that, is what Mark said. So if we leave it as is, but add those, those positions that, that he's showing here, and decrease Pitt community, and the decreases that he, that he's showing also, the school system, PCC, and Shepherd Library and Council on Aging. I like that idea too, as well as Mark does. I'd rather stay where we are right now, but I wanna, as I said, I, I heard the sheriff, I heard DSS and the school system and all of that, but wanting more positions or whatever. So they made their request to the manager, I'm sure, before, but he didn't see fit to put it in the budget at that particular time, so I am, when he went back and added some of them in, so, and decreased, he said he would have to decrease some, some areas to add in those positions. So in doing that, instead of giving the school system all of them as much as the two percent I think he, they were asking for, that he initially gave them, he decreased it some, so I would, I would like to see that one.
Thank you, yes.
Let me just clarify to your motion that's on the floor, just so there isn't any confusion in how it was restated, I believe the way it was made was that the one-cent scenario be, the motion is that that be brought forward as the proposed budget for the public hearing, not that that be confused with anyone perceiving that this is an increase of a tax this evening, that can't happen before a proposed budget is presented at a public hearing, the public has an opportunity to comment, and then the board takes formal action.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When Duane and Scott came forward with the manager's initial budget, it was put together very well, learning all of the lessons that they learned, what the board gives them direction to do, and I initially favored the manager's initial budget, as my colleague Mark did. After some concerns were raised, and Mark, Scott, and Duane re-looked at everything and slighted some other departments and filled some other things that were on the wish list, I myself, along with Mark, and, and I would support this, this last, this last one, thank you.
Thank you. Without having to go over all of the things that have been said, I certainly support the last, but last scenario, six to eight point six percent, as, as presented by the manager and the finance team, I think it was done very well. We are increasing the public education, we are, we're gaining surveillance, gang deputy child support, nourish, additional money for the former library, and, and the, the concern that I have about the fund balance is that it's, as Mark indicated, it's not a magical number. It says here that we'll be down to sixteen point four percent. Now, that's not a threat to our funding source being sixteen, although we, we tried to get eighteen percent, but that's not, that's not a, sixteen point four would not be a threat to our funding source, would it, Duane?
It is, it is, remember, the eighteen percent is the, is the target range, the floor of the target that this board set. As far as that falling down to sixteen point four-one being a threat, I don't know how, how the, the trend would look two years out, because remember, we're projecting nineteen point six-one this year. Under this scenario, we would go down to eighteen percent and then down to sixteen point four-one. To me, that represents a trend. That could catch the attention of your rating agencies, that could then start to ask questions, again, when, when we experienced a similar type of trend back in twenty-twelve, that's when we, we were on the radar. I will say that in our most recent bond rating visits, the bond rating agencies tend to focus more on your adherence to your policy. So they score you very heavily on your adherence, I'm saying your, but it's obviously ours, but as far as the board, your adherence to your policy. So if in your policy you say, we want to set a range of eighteen to twenty percent, they become a little more critical if they start seeing you go below your, your floor and continue to go below it.
Right, and, and that, that same rating's not, it's gonna say that we're gonna be there depending on.
Correct, this is a forecast.
Yeah, depending on the money, and also depending on how much money the county take in.
How much we spend and how much we take in, correct, this is a forecast.
That's right, that's my comment. Commissioner Wood?
Um.
Commissioner, Commissioner.
You know, I listened to the comments, and I weighed the area, and the one serious concern I have is that we have to pray that we don't have a disaster. There's nothing wrong with prayer, and I certainly believe in it, but when we are making bona fide decisions, we gotta weigh good sense, as, as well as prayer. And it bothers me that, see, I live in an area that floods when it rains. The water came out of the creek by the office late a couple of weeks or so ago, not that it overflowed into flooded areas that caused flooding, but everyone was a little uncomfortable as to how high the water will get. And it bothers me that we are more, and, and believe me, I don't care for taxes any more than any of you do, but I wanna be realistic to know that we don't have to pray that the water doesn't flood, and then it comes back and we're gonna, you still haven't got Matthew money yet. No one, none of us live in Griffin. None of us live in Griffin. Any of you all live in the areas that flooded? I do. And you don't know how the residents feel when the water rises, whether or not they're gonna get home, whether or not the children gonna be safe. We gotta take that in consideration, we can't just avoid it. Please. You all has been working at budgets longer than I have. You've been doing it years. You've been through Floyd, and you've had Matthew, and you're still not over with any of them. It took two years for Floyd, and I say you didn't do anything really for Floyd. But you got Matthew standing at you, and you still haven't recovered the funds, and you still gotta use your fin, fund balance for Matthew to make sure, if they don't give you the money, what gonna happen to you? They don't give you the money for Matthew in this budget, what's gonna happen, Duane?
If we got denied, which we do not feel like we will.
I didn't say you're gonna get it, but.
Yes, ma'am.
You're forecasting, that's just like if it's gonna rain or snow tomorrow.
If, if we are denied the reimbursement from FEMA, it would have to come out of our fund balance.
And how much?
Uh, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
For, for, for just to cover Matthew?
Yes, ma'am.
And that doesn't mean the other incidentals that may occur.
That's the total amount that we've accrued for Matthew.
For Matthew?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, you gotta think seriously about it. And I'm always uncomfortable when it floods, and I get it whenever the water rises. And you can sit up here and be happy on high land, I'm on the low grade, and I'd like for you to think about that. There needs to be something to increase, so that our, our officers that we hire to make good decisions can do something to, to give them some wiggle room, 'cause they're gonna start sweating, and Scott gonna start wiggling in the chair, I've seen the body languages, you know, he getting a wiggle in the chair, and Duane be sitting over there like this, we gotta, we gotta stop that. So I'm not a numbers person, and I tend to think out of the box, and something's gotta be done. We have been fifteen years, and fifteen years, and you haven't raised it? Find something somewhere. And it, in addition to praying, prayer works, but we gotta think about that, and we can't completely depend on our prayer, not everybody's prayer get answers. Thank you.
Beth, are you going to speak?
No, they.
Then I want to make a substitute motion, that we, that we raise it to seventy-one cents, to two-point-four percent. It's wonderful that we took it down to the twenty, I mean, to the twelve percent, or, or somewhere in that range, and we hung on to people, we didn't let them go. We didn't let them go because we had fund balance. Arguably, this year is, is a, is a better year than, than between two thousand and eight and two thousand and twelve. I don't think too many people would argue that, that period of time was a whole lot worse. You survived those years because there was existing fund balance. If we continue to take it down now as a percentage, and if things go sour, for whatever reason, if the economy turns around and all of a sudden does another two thousand and eight, do, what are we gonna do then? Raise taxes? No, I don't think so. I don't like the tax increases either, but my proposal, my motion is that we, we look at it from the standpoint of what's really needed. You know, it's amazing to me that arguable, la, last year, I argued that of that four million dollars, we were gonna get some of that back, or we weren't really gonna spend it, and that was part of what I did to offset the sheriff's pay, remember that? Does, does the board remember that argument? Well, I'm looking at it now conversely, and I'm saying, okay, I think seventy-one cents is the right amount. Let's say that it's too much, there's nothing that says that next year we can't reduce it, and we'll know next year if it was a little bit too much, but if it's not enough, well, then what are we gonna do next year? We gonna raise it? I don't think so. So you have my second, my substitute motion.
Just substitute motion again stated, please.
That it was, that we raise it to a seventy-one cent tax rate.
Okay, it has been motion, Commissioner Colson, that we raise it to seventy-one cents tax rate.
And when I say this, it's under the provisions of what Janice said, for us as the direction that we give to the county manager, not that we are adopting seventy-one cents, but he needs, he needs to be out of the fog, he needs to know, and Duane needs to know, is it seventy-one cents, is it sixty-nine point six percent, is it, is it sixty-eight point six percent? He needs to know, they need to know.
I second.
It's been moved properly seconded that we have a seventy-one cents tax rate, brother. All in favor of saying motion?
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman. Seems we don't really have many good choices at all, but, you know, we do have to run a county. I just want to talk about some of the proposals, I mean, the, the last one, if this fails, we'll revert back to the final option, I believe, or, I think. But, you know, and, and it adds in some good things, but it also takes out a lot of good things. It takes out a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. It takes out a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, uh, from the employees that we currently employ. And that we've just gotten back on track or on a path to, uh, a decent wage for what they do for this county. And, uh, and, I mean, no one's making themselves rich by working here. So they're doing a great service for us. By doing that, we're cutting education by a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, plus the community college cut, which was modest at nineteen. And, um, the library at two thousand to, so that we can add some other positions that are gonna be further, uh, even tougher to pay for next year if you do nothing on the tax rate or if we do nothing, not you. I wish it was y'all, but I'm part of you. But, uh, and so it just seems like, uh, with that option, we're adding an ever, even bigger basket of things to deal with twelve months from now when nothing has changed and then we're bottoming out on our fund balance, uh, policy, which I, I do not think is, is sacred. I just think it's proper that we, uh, maintain the policy that we set out, uh, to do. And, um, and I think even if we, uh, even if this motion passes with the seventy-one cent, we need to look very carefully at that three hundred and twenty-six thousand of additions. And not for tonight, but as we move forward to decide if we want to, uh, do that, to add three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, uh, worth of things that are gonna increase with pay raises and, and, uh, insurance and things that we're gonna have to cover as a county. I, I'm not comfortable with expansion for the sake of expansion. And if the goal of raising the taxes is to expand the government, then I'm against it. If it's to cover our expenses and make sure that we're financially whole, then I can swallow that pill. And, but I, I guess that's what I need to hear is, is what we're gonna do. And I know this isn't a final vote on it, but I think we need to be ve- very careful in, uh, doing this to add a lot more people to the roles that we're gonna have to take care of in a few years. It's just another version of kicking the can down the road. But it's just a, a bigger can we're gonna have to pick up if we're adding all these extra positions and all the things that come along with each employee when I, I feel like we don't even fully have our sea legs, uh, as it pertains to the budget and with what we've got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ward? Mr. Ward, you have some comments?
Well, the only thing I wanted to say about the, these positions is it's not like we're adding back all the positions, whether we go with the, uh, one cent or the two point four. Uh, these are just almost miniscule according to the requests from these departments. And, um, the, these people from these different departments have been coming to us the past, differently from the first few years I served on this board, coming with more realistic requests, the basic things that they feel like they need to take care of, um, our counties, our county citizens. And it bothers me on the, one on the right that we would be decreasing Pitt County Schools and decreasing Pitt Community College and decreasing our, uh, contribution to Shepherd, which we, Shepherd Library, all having to do with education, which is our number one, um-
Goal.
Goal for the, uh, county commissioners and has been for a while. So that bothers me to be decreasing in, um, that area. So, um, it's not a popular thing and it's not an easy thing. And like we've said, it's only a proposal to go before, uh, public hearing. So, that's it.
Scott and Dwayne, for, for, for a matter of clarification, are we, we're decreasing some of the schools, Pitt, Pitt Community College and Pitt County School System? But are we also increasing it from what they, what we did last year?
Correct. You're-
So we are increasing.
You're, you're-
Yes.
You were increasing on all those fronts a- at a factor of two percent. So that was a two percent expansion to what you've already given them in the, the current year. So now you're reducing that expansion by a factor of point three five for a net increase of one point six five percent.
And it wasn't all that they had requested. We were still only giving them a portion of what they had requested. So we are, we are decreasing that portion which did not meet their expectations or their request.
But found analysis, we are increasing. And also on the, on the merit and the cost of living, we are still giving our employees a, a, a cost of living and a merit, even though it may not be as much, uh, on the scenario number, uh, the last one, one that you proposed.
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted the public to know that we, we are gonna be doing some things to help our employees in terms of, of raises and merit. And we're also gonna be increasing, uh, the, uh, educational system. We said it's our number one, but not as much. And I feel good about that.
May I say one thing?
Yes.
I would like for the schools and the education process in this county become number one in the east. I want the children to be able to read and write and we need to relieve the pressure of some of that.
Okay.
Arithmetic. Oh, that do numbers.
Any more discussion? Are you ready to vote?
Who's, who seconded it?
I did.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams second. All in favor of-
Do you have the clerk restate the substitute motion?
Please state the substitute motion.
To approve the public hearing, to approve for the public hearing, the proposed budget that includes a two point four percent-
Cent.
Cent tax increase.
That's to go before the-
That's the substitute motion.
To go before the public.
Okay. All in favor of the said motion, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand.
That fails.
That fails.
And then you'll go to your original motion.
Original motion, state that please, Madam Secretary.
Motion to approve for the public hearing, the proposed budget that includes a one cent tax increase.
All in opposed, all in favor of that motion, let it be known by raising your right hand.
Wait a minute.
One cents tax increase. Let it be known by raising your right hand.
Do that rule out the number two?
No.
I wanna make sure I know what I'm voting for.
That's the one cent-
One cents tax increase.
So we voted down the two?
Yes.
I'm voting right.
Please raise your right hand again. Okay, one, two, three. Four, okay.
Okay, all those opposed.
Those opposed, let it be known by raising your right hand.
So we're back in the circle again.
That motion fails.
That motion passed. Failed.
Mr. Chairman. We open for another motion?
Yes, I am.
I move that we present to the public manager additional added position, the item number four on this adj- five on this agenda.
Okay. I second that.
Oh, I'm not sure I followed that.
Sixty, sixty.
He went down right there.
I thought that was the original thing.
We're going back to the original manager thing.
No, it's, it's- No, the alternate.
It's on the-
May I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
My motion is to present to the public at our neck, whenever the time is, if it's passed by this board, the presentation of sixty-eight point six tax increase, I mean, tax rate for the next fiscal year as outlined on this here being one, two, three, the fourth segment.
And I will second that.
Has been moving properly second that we consider?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Okay.
I move that we have a tax rate of sev- seventy and a half cents.
Of seventy?
Seventy and a half cents.
Seventy point five. Okay. Madam-
What number of, excuse me, the number of tax cents increase would that be?
Seventy point five. One point nine?
One point nine.
And that was seventy? That was seventy point five. Did we have a second? Do we have a second on that motion?
It's what you said it was, Dwayne?
One point nine.
Yeah, one point nine cent.
One point nine.
Per, yes, one point nine cents.
One point nine cents. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
It has been proved, moving properly second that we, uh, go with seventy point five, which is one point nine percent. All in favor? How did we proceed with this, Madam?
That's right. As a substitute motion, you'd vote on your substitute motion first. So you would now be voting on the seventy point five, um, cent.
One point nine.
Yes.
All in favor of the one point nine percent increase, let it be known by raising your right hand? Two? All opposed, your right hand. Motion failed. Commissioner, and your motion was for the last scenario.
I think I got a yes.
Right. And it, and it was second. Okay. Now we go back to, uh, Commissioner Owens' motion, which was second, sixty-eight point six percent. Uh, keeping it as is. Those in favor of that motion, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed.
We didn't have everybody vote.
We didn't have everybody vote?
But did we have the opposed?
We did.
Which one you vote with?
Opposed.
That's the case, then it fails.
I didn't hear the opposed. I'm sorry.
That fails.
That fails. Okay. So we don't have anything?
Circle the wagons again.
Well?
Can I ask one question about the sixty-eight point six in the fourth column? And then the sixty-eight point six in the first column?
Yes ma'am.
The first column is no additions of anything requested in the, it just bothers me that we're decreasing the education and, and that's the reason I could not vote for that. So.
We have not had a motion for that option.
No, not the one on the left, but the one on-
For the reason I couldn't support it, I still do not like the idea of our fund balance being projected at the end of six thirty nineteen at sixteen point four percent. I do not think that's wise. We have talked, we showed the chart where our peer counties are up around twenty-six percent. And, and I personally think that's too high. But I think our goal of eighteen to twenty is reasonable. Mr. Chairman, may I ask, uh, Dwayne a question?
Yes.
And Scott, I asked you earlier what you expected at the end of the present fiscal tax year?
Yes, sir.
What the, uh, fund balance that we had agreed to be for to be?
Yes, sir.
You said a million?
We will utilize a million, which will, should put us at nineteen point six.
In all likelihood, that three million will go back. Is that correct?
That's right. That's what would-
Will you speak to Mr. Gash and tell him what that three going back will do?
It will, it will project-
Saying your balance as of six thirty eighteen is going to be eighteen percent.
Yes, sir. That's for next year. In the current year, the impact on fund balance, it will take us from, last year we were at twenty-one point three six. This year, I'm projecting nineteen point six one.
I understand that. I understand that, Mark. I'm trying to think long range.
But when he said, you know, you used only, what, a million?
We project to use a million by the end of this year.
By the end of this-
We're still spending money through June thirtieth, so, yes ma'am.
And that as of July one, you're, everything is gonna change.
It starts over.
It starts over.
Correct.
So that, that is what, what made me vote the way I voted, that we, uh, used the, the last column. And, and, uh, even though the fund balance as of six thirty eighteen will be eighteen point one, but I'm thinking that the forecast for nineteen, it may not be. Is that possible?
That is very possible. This is a forecast. I want to emphasize. But it is a forecast based on trend.
And it's based on the expertise of our financial director, which I greatly respect. Ms. Dwayne, when, when you projected-
Yes, sir. Commissioner Owens, please.
When you project, you carry over the three, we have that. At the time that you put this on item number four, eighteen point oh one, did you add that three to it? In your projection?
My projection is based on us spending at the rate that we have spent plus taking into consideration the additional expenditures that we're proposing to put into this budget.
Dwayne, I, I think the answer to, to Vice Chairman Owens' question is yes. That three million dollars, you did calculate that back into, falling back into-
Yes, sir.
All right.
So it's not like a plus and raising it three million dollars?
No, it's the same three million.
Right. We're still talking about the same lump sum of money that was there before we spent any money this year.
Mr. Chairman, in light of the baggage and forwards that we've gone through tonight, I don't know we're being any closer to a resolution or not. I suggest you designate another time to come back since we have another meeting to go to.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Vice Chair, I'd let the managers speak on some, uh, subject now. What, where we have, I think we got in a situation where we haven't made a, a proper decision before we entertain that, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think, um, Vice Chairman Owens is, is correct. The, the best course would be for the board to come back and to revisit this one more time. I mean, technically, you could carry these four scenarios into a public hearing format, but that could be very confusing for the public, very confusing for the media to try to put out there four different budget scenarios and expect the public to come in and, and, and for you then to decipher under the four different scenarios which one they're supporting or not. So it would really be best if, if the board can narrow this down to one or, one or possibly two scenarios to bring into a public hearing, but four is almost unmanageable in terms of going into a public hearing format. So I concur with Vice Chairman Owens to come back at a later date.
Your public hearing is not scheduled for June the sixth or seventh, which is-
Correct. Tuesday night, June the seventh.
June sixth at seven P M.
Do you have a date you want to recommend?
That we can come back?
Let me look at the calendar here. I would suggest, um, so we're in the week of, this is May the twenty-second. Um, we could do toward the end of this week or the beginning of, well, next week. Monday's Memorial Day. I would almost suggest the end of this week, um, maybe Thursday, the twenty-fifth.
If, if that's what the majority would like to do, that's fine, but I'm leaving for Florida Wednesday.
So let's look at that Tuesday.
I'll be back Saturday.
Can we look at the Tuesday of-
I'm moving to it next Tuesday.
I second it.
For, you know, looking at afternoon, evening, six P M?
Nine o'clock, sorry, with me and my buddy. You wanted it night for public hearing, right?
Well, this is not a public hearing.
We could do it-
Nine o'clock's better.
Okay.
I don't have my calendar. I don't know whether I can be here or not.
Well, I think it's important-
I personally don't understand why we can't keep going back and forth until we finally give the manager tonight some clear-cut decisions.
I need to ask-
Well, I, that will require, excuse me, I'm sorry. That will require somebody changing their position.
Which I was gonna ask.
I've already changed my position.
Okay, well, let me ask you a question. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would you be willing to change it again?
I certainly would.
Okay.
I'll make a motion then that we go to seventy cents. I've gone from seventy-one, seventy-one and a half, or seventy cents, pretty close to what you'd said. You wanna make a substitute motion?
I, do I wanna make substitute motion?
Somebody?
Yeah. Can we continue? Can we continue?
We have an adjourned.
You can continue to his motion. You would not need to substitute. You'd need a second.
The second, that motion.
Yeah. You have the second, that, his motion, right.
The seventy cent motion.
The seventy cent.
Seventy cent didn't fail. Seventy and a half cent failed.
I said be a second, though. You, you made the motion. Somebody needs to second your motion of seventy cents.
Oh, that's true. That's right. And so if nobody votes for it, then it fails.
Okay.
So you have a second.
So we can get a vote.
Has been moving properly second that we go to seventy cents.
So I make a substitute?
Yes.
Can I repeat my original motion as a substitute motion at this point in time?
Sure you can.
Madam Attorney?
In the same meeting, it has to be somebody on the, may I consult your rules of procedure? Because I think the answer is no, but I.
Okay.
Can somebody else make the motion?
Would have to be somebody who was on the prevailing side. So within the same meeting, if you want.
Could I make a substitute motion that we vote on, the only one that wasn't voted on, the manager's original budget? Because I think Ms. Ward may consider that as no.
No, Ms. Ward will not consider that.
I had to ask.
Well, you did, and I sent the word down no, so there we go.
Okay, in order to modify a prior vote at the same meeting, Mr. Chairman, um, it must be made by a member who voted with the prevailing side. And so you, um, uh, your motion failed, you may not remake it as a substitute motion.
But there was no prevailing side.
Well, the.
Since there was no prevailing side.
It failed.
Uh, that would seem to be a moot point.
And I would, so I, it would be my opinion that making that motion would not comport with your rules of procedure as they're currently written. However, these are your rules of procedure. And if the board wishes to vary from those rules for purposes of this motion, the board could act to do that as well.
But if I could say, we're not making a motion on a final vote. We're trying to give the county manager direction. And this really is a little, and the way I'm looking at it is a little bit different. Can you take a tenth of a penny off of it or add a tenth of a penny?
I am committed to one penny. And I, I'm sorry that, but I cannot alter that. I think that if I look at the numbers that has been presented, I think that will meet our objectives and it will keep the fund balance at a reasonable level for the next, actually, next three years, next three years. Because we got the nineteen point six at the end of this year and then these two at the end of the next two years. And I am very comfortable with that. And I just don't see any need of going higher than that and just building money, uh, into fund balance. More. Because I think these, these numbers are adequate.
They're not, they're not building any, you're just putting.
Are you gonna spend it?
Didn't I make a motion for us to have it at nine o'clock next year and wasn't that seconded?
I seconded.
It was, it was seconded.
I did not have record of that, did you?
Yes, Ms. Ward seconded.
To do it at nine o'clock? Okay, so then any other motion at this point is out of order until that motion is voted on.
But he made a substitute motion. Couldn't he make a substitute motion?
It would, it's not of the same nature.
Oh.
We can always learn something.
So this goes back to.
Lawyer, lawyer.
This goes back to our, our motion of, and properly second that we would resume back at nine o'clock on what day?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, May the twenty-ninth, thirtieth, thirtieth, thirtieth. Tuesday thirtieth at nine A. M.
Tuesday, May, May thirtieth at nine A. M. All in favor of said motion, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed.
I expect you to have a time.
Motion carries. Thanks.